To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Swicker?
Here.
Ms. Brier?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is a special presentation. Mr. Zimmerman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We have some representatives from the Sound Transit Agency with us today to make a special presentation on two issues. We have Barry Alavi, who's the project manager for the Sound Transit Tukwila Longacre Station project, the modifications and the work that's going to be done on that station. And we also have Mike Bergman from Sound Transit. He's their service planning manager to talk about some proposed changes to transit routes in Renton, including the two express bus routes, number 560, 566, and also some proposed changes to the Sounder commuter rail train. Sound Transit has asked that Mr. Alavi's presentation on the station go first for time constraints. So if you have no objections, I'll set him up and he'll start out with that presentation.
Okay, thanks, Greg.
My name is Barry Alavi. I'm the project manager for the Tukwila station. As everybody knows, the station currently operates out of two, what we call a wooden platform, the structures. And by probably April of next year, we're going to start construction there. I'm going to do a brief overview of some of the schedule and overview of the site layout that we're proposing for this project. I'm going to go over some of the major elements of the project and talk about the highlights a little bit. The site, as you can see, it has basically a bus loop that we've created to accommodate King County buses and Rapid Ride. We have 390 parking stalls. We have managed to also include four electrical vehicle charging stations for King County with capability to add 10 more in the future. We have also an ADA parking area, a transit kind of kiss-and-ride drop-off area. The station includes, of course, two 600-foot platforms with a main plaza area where it has the bike lockers and all the other bike storage facility underneath it, plus ticket vending machines. We also have these very, very gentle ramps that, you know, people these days have a lot of carry-on loggages that they can easily go up the ramps and get to the platform area. Also stairs. On the east side of the platform or the BNSF tracks, we also have a fire access road for City of Tukwila's Fire Department to access it. There is an existing underpass that is going to be utilized for pedestrian crossing that through a bit of negotiations with BNSF, we managed to ask them to allow us to widen it by another two or three feet. So we just got their approval to have that. That's on the north side at Longacre's Way Crossing. So we also have a, we'll have Amtrak ticket vending at the same area that our ticket vendings are going to be at the plaza area underneath the, close to the bike cage. The station also includes new lighting and CCTV cameras, security cameras, and bus layover area. Also, we are connecting the station to the Strander Boulevard, the project that Bob Hanson is managing right now, so that there's a connection from the Strander Boulevard to our site at this southern location over here. So that road is going to have basically lighting and all the other amenities required for buses and other transportation connection to that area. Again, I just mentioned some of the major elements. We've been working closely with BNSF, Amtrak, Boeing, AT&amp;T, Olympic Pipelines, City of Tukwila, City of Renton, and others. As you can imagine, there's a lot of stakeholders on this project. We're planning to advertise the project by the end of November. We will, we've already done the utility relocation work, basically fiber optics that were relocated. And we're planning to advertise the project next year, or actually award the project by April of 2013. We expect this project to take about 18 months to complete, so by September of 2014, we'll be in service. We're very closely coordinating this project with City of Renton, project manager, and also the contractor, Atkinson, trying to kind of do a lessons learned and see if we can take advantage of some of the things that they learned through that bridge installation that is going on right now at the Strander. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions if there's anything specific that you'd like to know.
Any questions from council? Okay, well, thank you very much. We appreciate the update.
Thank you. Thank you, Barry. I'll switch over to you, Mike.
Can everybody hear me okay here?
Yeah.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on Sound Transit services in Renton and particularly the service change proposals that were currently circulating for review that would take effect next year if they're approved. So I'm going to move along here. First of all, I wanted to mention the cover slide here on our slide presentation, which shows Route 560 bus at the Renton Transit Center. One of the best-kept transit secrets that that provides, a 15-minute ride between Renton Transit Center and the airport, non-stop, almost non-stop. But I wanted to start off kind of more on a big-picture note. The map here on this slide shows the Sound Transit network, which extends from Everett on the top of the map down almost 80 miles to DuPont on the south part. Light rail on the map is shown in red. Sounder commuter rail is shown in green. And the network of 25 express bus routes is shown in blue. For tonight, I'd like to give a brief overview of Sound Transit's subarea equity policy, the current Renton area transit service that we provide, the financial outlook for Sound Transit in the long term, and service change proposals for 2013. So this map shows the five regional subareas that form the basis for Sound Transit's equity policy. The subareas are Snohomish County, North King County, East King County, which includes Renton, South King County, and Pierce County. These subareas were established by the Sound Transit Board back in 1996 to provide geographic equity in allocating transit resources while still allowing a mechanism to develop a system with regional benefits. The board policy states equity will be defined as utilizing tax revenues and related debt for projects and services which benefit the subareas, generally in proportion to the level of revenues each subarea generates. To carry out the policy, we developed separate cost-revenue statements for each subarea based on the revenue each one generates and the projects and services it receives. Now, my specialty here is service planning, and I don't pretend to have a comprehensive knowledge of all Sound Transit finances, but I do know how service costs are allocated, and I'll talk about that here in the next slide. This map shows current Sound Transit services in the Renton vicinity. On the north, bus route 560, shown in blue, connects Renton with Kennydale, Newport Hills, South Bellevue, and downtown Bellevue. To the south, it connects Renton with Sea-Tac Airport, Burian, High Line, and West Seattle. Route 566, shown in red, connects Renton with Bellevue and Overlake on the north and with Kent and Auburn on the south. The map shows the bus stops served by these routes in Renton, including the Renton Transit Center in the downtown area. Route 560 runs all day, seven days a week, while Route 566 runs all day but on weekdays only. Now, the map also shows the Tukwila Sounder Station, which Barry just described as being rebuilt considerably from its current form. It's located on the boundary between Tukwila and Renton. All South Sounder costs, the Sounder line, capital and operating are funded by the South King and Pierce subareas. So now, looking at the bus network based on Sound Transit's equity policy, bus route operating costs are shared based on the percentage of vehicle hours operated in each subarea. For Route 560, East King contributes 56% of the cost, and South King contributes 44%. For Route 566, the split is 69% East King and 31% South King. So this map shows that the majority of Tukwila station riders, shown by the red dots here on the map, are oriented towards Renton based on license plate surveys. 59% of the vehicles parked at the station are registered to Renton residents. The map also shows the network of metro van-share routes, those are the blue lines there, that connect the station with Renton employment sites, including City Hall. Commuters ride Sounder trains to the Tukwila station, then board a rideshare van for the last leg of their commute. There's a total of 55 vans providing this connection from the station. So if you go by the station, you'll notice typically a large number of vans parked there, and that's the reason why. As Barry described a few minutes ago here, this long-awaited new station will have much improved access, a much larger park-and-ride, and facilities specifically designed for convenient bus, van, and bicycle connections. The ST2 program, that's Sound Transit's current program, it was approved by voters in 2008, included expanded Sounder service between Seattle, Tacoma, and Lakewood. While implementation has been delayed by the recession, we're moving ahead with the first phase of this expansion with a new round trip next fall, to be followed by additional trains in 2015 and 2017. While one new round trip may not sound like very much, the capacity of each Sounder train is enormous, over 1,100 seats added each way. Sounder ridership is up and is expected to increase even more with the recent extension of service to South Tacoma and Lakewood. Now, we've worked really closely with King County Metro to accommodate expanded bus service at the Tukwila station. Currently, Metro buses have to use a Boeing-owned roadway to reach the station, and that roadway gets closed during certain hours, restricting the amount of connecting bus service that can be provided. Metro's new Burian-Renton Rapid Ride line will serve the station at all times of the day when it starts operating next fall, using the extension of Strander Boulevard, now under construction. Rapid Ride will run every 10 minutes during peak hours, every 15 minutes during the midday on Saturdays, and every 30 minutes at other times, a major improvement compared with the existing Metro service along that corridor. So I wanted to include this slide because it provides a snapshot of how Sound Transit is doing from the revenue standpoint, a very complex topic by itself. The plan approved by regional voters in 2008 included a very large capital program that expands light rail to the north, east, and south parts of the region, together with increases in Sounder service. Starting in 2010, it was becoming clear that the original projections of future tax revenue were being undermined by the recession. This table shows the revenue projections from 2008, when the plan was approved, together with the most recent projections from July of this year. So if you look at this closely here, you'll see that the more recent forecasts now predict that system-wide revenue will be almost 30% less over the 15 life of the program compared with the 2008 projections. In East King, revenue projections are about 33% lower than the 2008 forecast. So the recession made it impossible to complete all the ST2 projects within the 15-year timeframe. So in late 2010, the board approved, the Sound Transit Board approved a revised implementation schedule that suspended or delayed some elements of the plan, reduced administrative costs and contingencies, and made efficiencies in transit operations. These changes were implemented starting last year in 2011. With this realignment, we expect that, or we anticipate completing, the vast majority of the ST2 plan and most capital projects will be unaffected. In the effort to balance the needs of our long-term ST2 commitments and day-to-day service, one of the outcomes of that realignment process last year was a limit placed on bus service expansion. While the planned ST Express route network was fully implemented by 2010, peak period ridership has continued to increase, and up until now, total bus hours have expanded to accommodate that ridership growth. This graph illustrates our dilemma here. Total vehicle platform hours, shown by the red line, are now flat and fixed at about 700,000 annual hours in the 2013 budget and the finance plan for the next several years. So vehicle hours are commonly used industry measure here for bus service. So our forecasts, at the same time, show that ridership will continue to increase as the economy recovers. So we're not having to cut service, as many other transit agencies are doing, but we have to be very creative to use the existing service resources that we have and avoid serious passenger overloads, because what most of the growth we are seeing is during commuter peak hours, when there's more people on the buses than at any other time. So these are proposed strategies for accommodating growth, what we've been taking to our board members for their consideration and then realized in the proposals here that I'm going to show you here in a few minutes. Reduce service, where ridership is much lower than the system average. Minimize service duplication, places where we may be running on top of, say, partner agency services and doing pretty much the same thing and not really carrying full loads on either service. Using the savings from these actions to address growing ridership markets and passenger overloads, places where we have people that are having to stand for long periods of time or may even be, buses may be so crowded that we have to pass up. And then finally, deferring the retirement of some of our older buses to provide more peak period capacity. So typically, in the past, buses had about a 12-year life, and oftentimes, transit agencies would retire them at 12 years. Now, more and more, you're seeing agencies get 15, 16 years out of their fleet of buses. They're definitely better made than they used to be, and they can last longer. So I'm not sure how well you can see this here. I know the numbers are a little small. But these two tables here up on the slide show the contrast between our lowest ridership and highest ridership bus routes. Route 566 that serves Renton, one of the two routes that serve Renton, has the lowest midday ridership of any ST Express route. This table shows the average maximum load, that's the point where the bus has the largest number of people on it at one time, and the average boardings per trip, which is the total number of boardings that a bus carries over the course of a one-way trip. So generally, the total boardings is more than what you see at the maximum load point. So I want to emphasize that even though the midday ridership is low on Route 566, the route does pretty well overall because of strong and growing ridership during the peak periods. Now, at the other end of our spectrum here, peak ridership on three of our most heavily-used routes, two of them on the east side and one in the South King subarea, are shown here on the table to the right in red. The first two routes there, Route 545 and 550, are buses that cross the lake on the 520 and I-90 corridors respectively. And then the third route there, the 577, connects Federal Way with Seattle. So I'll get back to this table a little bit later, but this kind of illustrates part of our quandary here. You see the much higher ridership on those routes that run during peak and that have very heavy loads on average.
Can I stop you there?
Sure.
So if we could go back to that last chart. I am a little bit confused, though, because you're comparing, it is truly an apples-to-oranges comparison, right? You're saying 566 has low ridership, and then you're picking midday and then comparing it to high ridership on other routes, but intentionally picking peak. So I can't look at this and say, yeah, 566 has lower ridership than any of the other routes.
You're absolutely right. And the reason why it's shown this way is because we're basically suggesting that midday service be reduced to allow more resources to be applied to those heavily-used peak routes. And I'll get to the end of that in more detail here a little later.
But I guess...
Okay, hold on a second. Mr. Person?
Well, I want to follow up on Mr. Corman's question, because if you're showing that the midday is slow here, but you don't show what the other midday is on the other routes, they may have lower boardings during that midday, and you're taking our bus service away and not from the other people.
If you look closely at the table, it shows the midday ridership on the other routes there, including the 545 and 550.
On the midday, they got 545, 550.
Oh, I see. Okay. Okay.
577 is missing.
But we're not showing the peak for this route.
Right. So the blue table there is just midday ridership, and so it compares all of the routes that we have that actually have midday service. So there's some routes that just have peak-only service.
Okay. Okay. That's part of the contrast.
So if you go through that, you'll see here that the 566 does have the lowest midday ridership, does not have the lowest peak period ridership, though.
I mean, I'll just say right now, I can kind of guess where you're going with this, but the midday, the midday service, I think, is a necessary component of getting, you know, the peak service. I mean, I'm a, you know, I've worked 28 years for a large employer, and I need to have a guarantee that I can get home in the middle of the day sometimes. And it would influence my mode of transportation if I didn't have that ability. So I worry about the idea of saying, well, we'll get rid of this midday and we'll still see good, solid peak, because I think people will go, well, I can't depend on that to get to my medical appointment, or if my child can't get home, you know, gets home early from school or something and I need to get home. So I worry about just saying, well, look, we'll just take these, this part of the service out.
Well, I think, as I get into this, I'll start to narrow that down a little bit, and we can explore that in a little more detail. So this bar chart here shows the pattern of boardings on Route 566, and northbound is shown in blue, going from Auburn through Renton and up the east side to Bellevue and Overlake. And then southbound boardings, they're start with the two stops at the Overlake Transit Center and the Overlake 520 Freeway Station, that's the first two bars. Then the third bar is the boarding point, the really tall one, is the boarding point at the Bellevue Transit Center in downtown Bellevue. So what this shows you here, together with some of the other data that we have, we also have other bar charts that shows lightings as well as boardings, is that the travel patterns on this route today are very oriented towards taking people north to these east-side destinations at Bellevue and Overlake in the morning, northbound, and then back in the afternoon. There's a fairly good-sized bar there for the Renton Transit Center. That's by far the busiest stop in Renton, much bigger than the stops in North Renton, for example, on Park. Let me just move on here. So earlier this year, we conducted an outreach process in the Green River Valley, actually extending all the way down to Sumner and Puyallup, as part of the Sounder Station Access Study. And one theme that we heard from valley commuters was that the Route 566 travel time to Bellevue and Overlake were excessive, taking over twice as much time as it would take to drive. We looked at the ridership patterns on Route 566, including detailed information on where passengers board and get off, and noted about half of the 566 commuters originate in Kent, Auburn, and points farther south, sometimes using connections from the south on the Sounder train. With the amount of peak service we currently operate on Route 566, this indicated that the route could be restructured into two routes, one making fewer stops for long-haul passengers, and the other continuing to connect all the communities along the corridor. Ridership during the peak period would increase as commuters are more likely to use transit when travel times are competitive. An additional benefit is that this would result in better load balance and ensure that seats are available for passengers who board in Renton. So this bar chart illustrates this nearly even balance between the long-haul and shorter-haul ridership on Route 566. This is just a snapshot here of the morning peak. So getting into the actual changes themselves here, this new Route 567, which is shown here by the dashed light blue line, would operate between Kent Station, Bellevue, and Overlake, and make stops only at those points. The commuters on this route would save an average of 10 minutes on a one-way trip compared to Route 566, and as much as 15 minutes during the PM peak. Those are significant travel time savings. There would be eight trips northbound in the morning peak and eight return trips southbound during the afternoon, scheduled to make connections with each Sounder train at the Kent Station. Sounder has the best on-time performance of any service we operate and provides a very convenient alternative to congested SR-167. The Sounder connection extends the effective service area for Route 567 into Auburn, Sumner, Puyallup, and even Tacoma. So Route 566 would continue to provide the majority of peak-period service along the corridor. The 566 would run every 15 to 30 minutes instead of every 7 to 15 minutes, and there would be a gap in the midday service. Now, this is not a total shutdown of midday service. It basically would continue to operate between about 10:30, 11 o'clock in the morning, or pardon me, the gap would be between 10:30 and 11 o'clock in the morning and about 1:30 PM. So there is a lot of what you might call shoulder service that extends into the midday. Now, about one-third of the Route 566 passengers during the midday are traveling just between Renton and Bellevue. So if you look on the map here, the purple line shows the existing Route 560, which makes that connection right now. It also stops at South Bellevue, but that would enable... It also stops at South Bellevue, but that would enable those, one-third of those Route 566 riders to continue to have, to have that direct connection between Renton and Bellevue.
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, could you go back to Slide 12?
Okay. So as I look at the northbound riders who begin at Auburn Station and they move on to the Bellevue Transit Center and stops along the way, I'm presuming that some of these same riders are going to be heading southbound, going back, is that the assumption?
That's probably a pretty good assumption, yes.
Okay, and what is the timeframe? What are these metrics there between what times are these?
This is daily. This is all day.
All daily. So I'm curious, it looks as if they're not all returning from the origination of the Auburn Station, the Kent Station. Why are those numbers so much less than where they started from? Are they leaving? Are they finding a different way back, or is it a different timeframe that they're coming back? I would think that it would be pretty similar.
They never add up to be exactly the same, and that's because some people take other bus routes one way or the other, or they may carpool one way, or, you know, get a ride, or whatever. Usually, they're fairly close. And I think that if you added up all the bars here on one end, they would probably come pretty close to the bars going the other way.
Even though they're going to different, they're getting off at different points, does this have a, is this a matter of maybe the connecting routes may be different later in the day, and they're taking different connection routes to arrive at the same location they started from?
Yes, that's certainly possible, too. And keep in mind, this is just boardings. This doesn't show people getting off. So we could put together a bar chart that would show both, and that might give you a better picture of what those patterns are.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd be curious to see a breakout of midday alone on these. And how many of these riders are going between Renton and Kent, Auburn?
Well, I think the numbers are fairly small, based on the data that I have seen. And I wish I had the electronic version of another bar chart that I have with me, but I just have the paper version, that shows a little more detail of how the ridership is distributed by stop and by time of day, both together. But in general, of course, the total ridership on the entire length of the route is pretty light during the middle of the day, which is why we're talking about it, really. Mr. Person?
On the equity issue, and maybe I misunderstood you earlier when you were saying that you're looking at where the people get off as to, you know, like, you go down and count the cars down at the Sounder Station and say, so many are Renton, have Renton addresses. So you count them against the Sounder equity, but the way, but on the east side, if I'm coming from Seattle on the bus to the east side, the east side pays all that. You don't count those riders that are coming from Seattle as part of Seattle's equity. You just count that all against the east side. And I think it just seems to me you're using a double standard for Renton, that you're counting them a little different. And I'll be very honest with you, I just don't think, for our $22 million or better a year that our taxpayers are paying, they're not getting the bus service that they should. And you shouldn't be counting the Sounder traffic against ours, our east side, because that's a south end.
The Sounder costs aren't counted against Renton or the east side, but there definitely are Sounder riders that live in Renton. I think that was my point there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
Go on back to the earlier slide where you showed that, I think, the number was about 59% of the users of the, actually, I think it was Mr. Alaby's presentation, 59% of the users of the Tuckwilla Sound Transit Station are Renton residents?
I think that was this one.
Oh, there it is. Yes, that's the one. Okay, so could you give me just a little bit more information about what does your equity piece mean regarding how you determine where the service routes are going to be prioritized, based on the populations that are using them?
Well, on the bus side, which is much different than the rail side, on the bus side, the bus routes, whenever they cross a subarea boundary, the route miles are counted separately each time they cross the boundary. So with Route 566, 31% of the route miles are within South King County, 69% are within East King County, and so that's how the costs of that route are split.
Okay, and that's what you mean by the equity piece, making sure that the cost is associated with the percentage of use in that particular area?
Yeah, exactly. Should I go ahead and proceed?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. Okay, so what we're proposing here is that new Route 567 that I mentioned, that would provide a much faster trip up the valley and up the east side to the big destination points in Bellevue and Overlake, reduced midday service, not the whole midday, but a portion of the center part of the midday, to provide service hours for additional peak trips on those three routes that I mentioned there, the two Cross Lake routes and the Federal Way/Seattle route. These are the most heavily-used services in our entire system. So the expected results here from all this, we're looking at improved Route 560 and 566 productivity. That will help to sustain, keep those routes sustainable over time, less overcrowding on Cross Lake and the Federal Way/Seattle routes. We're going to see increased total ridership on the corridor, because we've speeded up the travel time so much there, and also provided much better connections with the Sounder trains coming to and from the south, kind of adding a whole new dimension here of where we get our ridership. And then finally, as I mentioned here, this is consistent with our subarea equity policy, where changes to service that occur within a subarea always maintain the same number of dollars and hours within that subarea. So that concludes my presentation here. I'd be happy to try and answer any additional questions.
Well, we truly do appreciate you coming here, because it's like stepping into a hornet's nest, as you can imagine. We do feel like the residents and businesses in this community spend a lot of money for Sound Transit, and it's a little disheartening to see that they're actually going to be proposing to reduce the service that we're receiving. 567 may be a good plan for Sound Transit, doesn't do anything for our citizens, and you're going to have a host of questions. I know I have one question, and I, have you ever done an analysis to compare the relationship between your higher-used routes, for instance, some of the east side routes that were real heavy users, and the fact that you have parking garages and other ways for people to get on the bus? I mean, you've got just a handful clustered in a very small area for Renton, and people have no place to park, so they can't use it. So it's very limited on who can use the bus, can access the bus from our city. And I was just curious, in some of the areas like Federal Way and Redmond and Issaquah and some Amish where you've provided parking capacity for people, has that made a big difference in ridership?
Well, it certainly helps. All of those routes that are heavily loaded, that are up on that red list there, all of their park-and-rides are completely full, and people are finding new ways to access the service. They'll carpool to the park-and-ride, they'll use a connecting bus. Metro's been very good about restructuring their local service to better connect with Sound Transit regional service, and that's provided a lot of room for growth on those routes. We've just had a hard time providing enough capacity.
Okay, Council? Don?
Yeah, this is, how can I take a Sound Transit bus from Renton to Seattle?
You know, what I would do is I would ride a Sound Transit 560 bus up to South Bellevue Park-and-Ride and connect with our 550 there to Seattle. And particularly, if you live in North Renton, that's the fastest way to go.
But wouldn't it be faster if I could get on it and go right down Interstate 5 to Seattle?
You can do that on the Metro Route 101.
Not on Sounder.
In fact, I took that route out here this evening, which is interesting experience.
Well, and Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Corbin.
If I could just pick up on that point, because, and I hate to just look like we're beating up on you, but I just feel like, okay, so we're giving up some of our service so that it's easier for people in Kent to get to Bellevue. But just like Mr. Person says, our trips to Seattle, which is a hub of employment, all involve transfers and delays. And, you know, I'll tell you, I've been paying this tax now, I don't know what, we're getting close to 20 years, it seems like, 22 million a year. The city of Renton's up to half a billion dollars, probably, and counting. And I've got five kids, they've all grown. Right now, I've got two going to University of Washington, they can't seem to make Sound Transit work for them. I've had several that have worked in Bellevue, they can't seem to make it work for them. I've had several of them which have gone to Bellevue Community College, and the hours and timing just never seems to work. And I just feel like I've just spent a fortune on this. And then I look, and up near Bellevue College, you've installed a beautiful new parking garage, and people come from North Bend, I'm sure, and drive into that, and I'm not even sure they're paying the Sound Transit tax. So those of us in Renton that pay the tax, you know, can't get the service and we're having our service cut, and people coming from rural areas get to drive in down the I-90 corridor and enjoy great service that we're paying for. You know, we really need to, we need to see it boosted. I feel like we're having money taken away to pay for more light rail, which isn't coming close to us. And so I'm just not a fan at all of cutting the peak hour, or even the midday transportation. In fact, I think it's just going to be more frustrating for people, because they're going to take the, those that can figure out the Sound Transit routing, that do the transfer, that get to Seattle, start to come home and then realize that there's no bus to catch. And it's, people will be fickle about that. They'll go and they'll buy themselves a car so that they can get to their destination, get back when they need to.
Ms. Palmer?
Well, that was exactly what I was going to say, is we sit, this slide sits there in front of us, and you've talked about how there are 600 daily boardings in Renton on 566, and ridership will increase. You say all these things, and you're telling us here in Renton that you're decreasing our service. So basically, you're taking, on this slide, our revenue to increase for Auburn, Federal Way, Kent, people to get there faster, and our people have less choices. It's just, I hear it from people the same as all of you do. It's just frustrating. As much money as we're putting in, how little we get. When you look at the Sound Transit map that you put up there, it goes from, you're right, Everett to Lakewood, and then it's going to come across I-90, and it's blank. There's this little, two little dotted lines, which are two bus routes that pass through our city, that pick up our people.
And one of them getting cut, replaced with one which doesn't stop it or something.
Yeah.
Mr. Person?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Yes, and that was one of the reasons why I was asking the question about your subarea equity policy, is I wanted to understand it a little bit better, and to know whether or not it did take into consideration the concerns that we're speaking of right now. And I could even amplify that a bit. When I think about the people, one of my colleagues mentioned that, you know, an individual would be forced to go out and buy transportation. I would add that those who could afford to buy, you know, transportation, and oftentimes they're individuals that work outside of their community, and they rely on public transportation. And in many cases, these are some of the, even though the numbers may be few, you know, these are individuals that have to leave work early so that they can get home to, you know, or to pick up a kid from daycare before they get home. There's a host of reasons why we could say that, you know, we don't really see a strong reason to take those routes away, even though they may not be the big bang for the buck routes in terms of capacity during the high-peak times. They're still, they're going to impact the lives of some people in a very important way. So we would hope that that subarea equity policy could be expanded to mean something a little bit broader for our interest.
Is there anybody else with any comments or questions? Mr. Mayor? If I could just, I'm sure staff probably told you this wouldn't be a real great friendly crowd for you. I just did some back-of-napkin numbers, and we've done this a lot. So you probably heard, we're still waiting for our Sound Move project. So 15 years later, we've had no projects developed in this community. As was mentioned earlier, Sound Transit's received, in a fairly conservative investment, between $285 and $315 million from Renton residents over the 15 years. And you get about $21 million a year from us, between 18 and 21 million. We could buy limo service for every Renton resident that needed a bus more cheaply than we can for Sound Transit. So we're frustrated, I guess. That's probably something I hope you can take back. It's just not, and this is discussions we've had now for 15 years, just waiting, waiting for service that appears somewhat equitable for the residents of this community, for the money they're putting in. That's, it is frustrating, to say the least, for us, so. Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Swicker?
Yeah, Mr. Covington's comments are right on, and that's coming from the administration side. So I'd like to say, at least from one council member's side, I'm getting sick and tired of it. There needs to be something done, and that's the message that needs to go back. The relative merit of the midtime of the 560 is one thing. There's a big, giant issue here. And cutting, further cutting the limited service that we have is not a way to begin to address the inequity that we feel that we have. And I mean, I think we're reaching a point where we really have to, I think, as a city, start discussing options that we have available to us legally. We are contributing way too much for a regional system and getting nothing out of it. And it's just, it's getting to the point of where I think you somehow, Sound Transit has to assure us they're hearing us, because we're not hearing that, and this presentation doesn't get us there.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corbin.
Yeah, to just pile on a little more, I just look at, you know, if the route has too low of ridership to meet the criteria, I'd like to see you looking at alternatives that'll get the ridership up. You know, that the more people in Renton should be riding, so maybe consider having a bus that goes straight from Renton to downtown Seattle, or straight from Renton to the University District, or something like that. Don't just go, well, we'll just cut this because not many people are riding it. And I think it just says that it's not meeting our needs, and yet we're still paying the $22 million a year.
Mr. Mayor? At your presentation at ETP, you talked about the number of ridership coming out of Lakewood and getting off at Kent and getting on the bus. It just seems to me you're trying to take care of the people who live way out of our area at the expense of our citizens, and I think even if I'm Kent, I'm a little upset. Why are all these people getting off there, and you're basically giving them preferential treatment to get on the bus, to go straight through? I mean, they could tell them to come up to Renton and get on the bus, and give us a straight-through bus from here.
Okay. Was there, I think we gave you quite a bit.
Drew the short straw tonight, obviously.
In all seriousness, we do appreciate you coming down here.
We do, good information.
But I think you can share the fact that there's a lot of frustration here in terms of the level of service, and we'd like to see a couple of multi-story garages and access for our citizens to get on the bus.
Some direct HOV on-and-off ramps that were promised to us 10 years ago, things like that.
Was there anything else?
Was there anything else? Well, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next is a public hearing. Deb Needham, are you going to lead this, or is the chief gonna...okay?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm hoping my presentation will be less controversial, so it'll be.
This is gonna be pretty easy on you, Deb.
Okay.
Unless you're riding a bus.
I'm gonna be presenting to you the changes that are made thus far with our comprehensive emergency management plan. And I'm gonna go ahead and click through this fairly quickly, and I will certainly allow time to entertain questions. And because this is a public hearing, I'll defer to council and how you wish to accept comments from the public, if there are any. I don't know if any people signed up for public to speak, but we'll also have an opportunity at the end if people have questions based on the presentation. First of all, our comprehensive emergency management plan, also referred to as our CEMP, is required as a condition of our emergency management performance grant, and that is a significant grant to us. At this time, we receive approximately $104,000 a year directly to emergency management work and projects in the city. We are required by that grant to make sure our plan is revised every four years, and so we are in that revision cycle. The last time council saw this plan formally before then was on October 27th. It then goes to the state and to FEMA to make sure that we've met what they consider to be the best standard for emergency plans. So this is what we are in the process of finalizing right now. The timeline of this revision is that all departments have been chipping away at making revisions over the past four-year cycle. So we have been meeting regularly in the emergency management group, which has department representatives from every single department. Some departments have several representatives on that group. We have also been actively soliciting feedback from other agencies that are named in the plan, and this is something that we've been working to improve. When we first began revising the plan, we found that there were some agencies who didn't realize they were listed and named in our plan, and we felt it was only fair if we were going to hang responsibilities on them, that they should be able to review and comment on the plan. So we've done a much better job of that in this revision cycle, and we expect to continue to improve on that. To that end, what we did is we scheduled this public meeting to gather public comment, but we also asked that external agencies make sure that they provide us with their feedback as well, to take it at the last possible second that we possibly can before compiling it. One thing I will note is that we had a small misunderstanding regarding the purpose of our meeting today, so I did want to call attention to council agenda has on it, under items 8A and 9A, we have in your agenda, it says we were going to adopt the plan tonight. I would like to actually request that we allow sufficient time for any other agency input that I might receive before midnight tonight, and any public feedback that we get, to allow me a few days to be able to compile that, to consider it, and see if it's appropriate to include in our plan. So my plan is to have all those comments compiled over the next few days, and have that in your hands on October 25th, and that will give you, hopefully, sufficient time to review the plan in its entirety. And then what we would do is look for an adoption of that resolution at the November 5th public meeting. So the structure of the plan, I know that some of you are very familiar with this, because you've been through this process before, but we do have some newer council members who have not been through the CEMP adoption and revision process before. We follow with the structure of our plan, we follow the National Response Framework, which is federal guidance on how an emergency plan should be constructed. So we are structured with a basic plan, which you all have a reference copy of that, and there's a reference copy on the back table for anyone in the audience who would like to peruse that. It's also been posted on our web at rentonwa.gov for the last couple of weeks. The basic plan includes some of the basics about how are we structured, who does what in a very overview format. It also contains information about continuity of government, how we'll continue to do business, what the purpose of our emergency operations center is, how we activate it, who has the authority to do that, and that general information. The bulk of the plan, and most of what creates the volume of the plan, is what are called emergency support functions. So within any disaster setting, certain emergency support functions do need to be carried out, and it's universal, they have to be dealt with, it's the underpinnings of how we function as a society. So it includes things like transportation, how we warn the public, what our warning systems are like, firefighting, how we take care of people in shelters, how we do and deliver public health and medical services, what do we do about energy such as fuel and power. All of those things are in that plan. I will call to your attention, on this list, I inadvertently omitted ESF-15, which is our public affairs, and that's how we get information out to the public, routine information sharing, as well as emergency information sharing. And so the bulk of our plan is made up of these emergency support functions. And each emergency support function has a specific department that has taken on the primary agency responsibility for coordinating the writing of that. It doesn't mean they're the only ones who do something with that particular emergency support function, but they've agreed that they will be the primary ones to make sure that they coordinate that function for the city. So neither Emergency Management nor on a large department level with the Fire and Emergency Services Department is responsible for all of that. We simply coordinate and make sure that all those emergency support functions are somehow taken on by somebody in the city. So we've all worked together in the emergency management group to be able to work together to make sure that none of the ESFs are in conflict with each other, and to make sure we have everyone's agreement that this is how we intend to operate as a city. These emergency support functions are not detailed level, they really outline roles and responsibilities, so it really says who's responsible for it. At the department level, everyone who has a primary or a support function then keeps their own standard operating procedures and detailed level plans that include phone numbers and call-out lists, and all the things that it takes to make that function in a disaster. We also have some additional portions of the plan. We've added in damage assessment, evacuation, and then our terrorism civil disturbance annexes. All contain slightly more detail level. For instance, the evacuation portion of the plan includes an evacuation map for how we would evacuate. If we were to have, for instance, the flood threat that was hanging over our heads for a couple of years with the Howard Hansen Dam problems, it includes a map. If we ever did have a problem on that river, it includes the map for how we would move people out of an area. So these are the sorts of things that are in the plan. The types of revisions that we have made this year, because we did such a thorough going over of the plan in 2008, there really are not huge substantive changes in this plan. So I've summarized them here. There are some minor changes throughout, we had some department name changes. We have changed some meeting locations based on our perception of risk of certain buildings that we feel might be more vulnerable, so maybe less available to us or less convenient. We've changed some phone numbers with our new transition to our new telephone system that resulted in some new telephone numbers internally within the EOC. Those numbers actually are not in the redacted version of the plan that you have, because those are reserved for emergency use, but those are in the plan that all the departments have for reference. We also added in, there are a large number, there always are, external plans that we connect with. For instance, we've got several plans that have been developed at a regional level, in which Renton has had a strong voice in the development of regional plans, such as the structural collapse and rescue annex, or the pre-hospital emergency triage and treatment annex. These are things that are how we would coordinate in a catastrophic disaster, and their plans at a vast eight-county level. So we've included references where appropriate to those types of plans, because it will help guide us as we're looking for, how do we do what we need to do. We now have some new plans that we're referencing within our plan, so we can go out when the event is larger than just Renton. We've also added in some new capabilities that we didn't have before. Since we revised the plan in 2008, we added our code-ready emergency notification system so that we can call using a telephone dialing system and call and alert people of an imminent threat in their own neighborhood. We also added our neighborhood information centers, which we rolled out last year, and we actually exercised and used them in the 2012 January ice storm. We've included that reference in there, so that is something people don't forget to access and use. Also, we've recently added, council-approved, provision of a cold-weather shelter with our contract with Harambe and Catholic Community Services. So we now have that reference embedded in the mass care emergency support function. We've had some significant changes within the public health medical services ESF-8, as well as with the mass care ESF-6, at the request of the agencies that provide very strong support or leadership in those particular areas. So we've simply taken their wording that they asked us to use and have embedded that into our own plans. We did ESF-8 a couple of years ago, so some of this work has been ongoing, but ESF-8 is now being held up as an example in Renton. Public Health, Seattle and King County is now saying, "Look at the Renton plan, that's how we want all you other cities to write ESF-8 when you reference our function." So we've been doing best practice along the way, and those now have our partners feeling very comfortable with their role in it. We've had some change to ESF-11, we have more involvement with community and economic development. We'll be having more development on that particular ESF as we continue to add capabilities there. ESF-14, you'll notice, is missing from your reference copy, and that's because ESF-14 stands for long-term community recovery. We just completed our recovery plan, and council approved that this last spring. And if you'll recall, we also exercised and tested that draft plan in September of 2011, when we first had it in draft format. So because that was so recently done, we did not rework ESF-14, because that was so freshly done, and we simply reference it in ESF-14 in our plan. We simply point to our freestanding Renton disaster recovery plan. We've also moved the damage assessment. We are allowed, under the federal system of ESFs, to assign some things their own number, and it was previously assigned ESF-23, but we feel it fits more closely the definition for an annex, and so we've simply moved it to an annex format instead of calling it an ESF. We are going to have continued development of that. Risk management is the lead entity for development and coordination of that, and we're working closely with them from emergency management, with risk management, with other departments, to come up with a better process for damage assessment. And due to some personnel changes in risk management, we've had a transition there, and so we're picking up that again, and we expect that will be the first piece of our plan we begin reworking again in 2013. So this is not something that we let sit for four years. We constantly look at, where do we need improvement, where should we make changes? And we'll be working on this constantly through the next four-year cycle, and we'll bring it to you again for a final approval and adoption, and a blessing as we are completing that. I did want to note for you that we do have the terrorism civil disturbance annex that is not attached to your copy that you have in front of you right now. Julia has those copies for you, because they are considered sensitive under RCW 42.56.420. Portions or the entirety of that may be redacted due to sensitive nature of the terrorism content that's in there. And so if you would like to view a copy of it, Julia has a copy she can check out to you. We just need to make sure that we collect and return those, they do have requirements that they be kept secured. That's all that I have on the presentation side. I wonder if council has any questions for me.
Thanks, Deb. I do have one thing I want to clarify. The Public Safety Committee does have a report prepared in support of this. Are you gonna have some changes that they...it'll need to be referred back to committee?
I don't know that it will be substantive changes. I have already received, since we just printed this copy for you tonight, I've already received one additional change requested from the American Red Cross. They have some new language, they'd like to substitute something from what they submitted before, and I don't know what your protocols require.
Well, it's just that you're gonna have to schedule...they're gonna have to schedule a Public Safety Committee meeting to hear this if you want, if you don't want it read out tonight.
So if that's what we need to do.
We can hold a resolution, that's not a problem.
Okay, and I will defer to your judgment as to what the process is.
I'll leave that up to you, Don.
Well, I think we should read the report out tonight. We had a very intense discussion on it and review of it, and I'm sure that any changes would be very minor.
Yeah.
I would flag that in the October 25th. When I put it together, it will be any changes I've received today from outside agencies and any public comment that is then incorporated into the plan, I would be sure to flag that.
Okay. Do we have any correspondence?
No correspondence.
Okay, any questions from council? What's your wish?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
Does the public hearing be closed?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Zwicker, second by Mr. Corman, that the public hearing be closed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The public hearing is closed. Thanks, Deb, and we'll wait for November 5th.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to administrative report, Mr. Covington?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have nobody signed up for audience comments, so consent agenda, we have 10 items for council consideration. Are there any items that council member like pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
Hearing none, I would move the council concur in the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Zwicker, second by Mr. Corman, that council concur in the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Unfinished business, Mr. Zwicker.
No unfinished...excuse me, no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Breyer?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Prince?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Person?
Yes, I have a Public Safety Committee report.
Public Safety Committee report, City of Renton Emergency Management Plan. The Public Safety Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to adopt the updated City of Renton Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. All city departments participated in the revision of the plan, which is reviewed every four years. The committee further recommends that the resolution regarding this matter be adopted. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
Move the committee report be adopted, Fred.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Ms. Palmer, that council concur with the Public Safety Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Palmer.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corman?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Taylor?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to resolutions and ordinances, we're gonna hold the resolution until November 5th, and so we're moving on to ordinances. We have two ordinances for first reading.
The first ordinance for first reading regards the utility fees. And ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending section 8.2, 2, and 8.23 of chapter 2, Storm and Surface Water Drainage, sections 8.424 and 8.431 of chapter 4, Water and...excuse me. Water Drainage, section 8.424 and 8.431 of chapter 4, Water, and section 8.515 of chapter 5, Sewer, of Title VIII, Health and Sanitation of City Code, allowing for adjustments to current utility rates for 2013 and 2014.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
I move that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Zwicker, second by Ms. Breyer, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And the second ordinance for first reading regards the solid waste rates for 2013-14. And ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending section 8.110 of chapter 1, Garbage, of Title VIII, Health and Sanitation of City Code, relating to your 2013 and 14 services and utility rates for all customer classes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
Move this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Zwicker, second by Ms. Breyer, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, moving on to new business, Mr. Zwicker.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of items. First of all, congratulations Chip Vincent, out there talking to Jay Covington on his confirmation of appointment. We got you through. Next Monday is the fifth Monday, so there's no regularly scheduled council meeting, but we will be having a committee of the whole meeting here in council chambers, beginning at 5:00 PM, to continue our budget deliberations. Moving on then to November 5th, Monday, there is a 4:30 PM committee of the whole meeting. It'll first take place with one issue, regional issues, in the conferencing center, and the adjournment of that approximately 4:45 to 5 o'clock. Then we'll be moving over here to the council chambers to continue our budget deliberations. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Breyer?
Yes, on Monday, November 5th, at 3:00 PM, the finance committee will be meeting in the council conference room. We have three items, vouchers, the lease addendum with Vision House, and liability claims briefing. And that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On Thursday, October 25th, at 4:15 PM, the planning development committee will be meeting, discuss Dock 8 and allocation of the Highland Survey Area Fund. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Person?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Public Safety Committee meeting for November 5th has been canceled, and I would just like to make a comment that two of our city employees got Citizen of the Year on last Thursday, or last Thursday, it's long ago, I forget. They really represented the city well, and they're really deserving. It was a large crew there, and I'd like to thank, personally thank, Mr. Zwicker for getting me through the event, and I think we all had a good time, so.
Since you teased everybody while we say it.
Am I gonna name those?
Kevin and Norman.
Oh, Kevin and Norman McQuiller.
Okay.
I wanna keep everybody in suspense.
Ms. Palmer? Ms. Palmer?
I don't have any new business, but I would just like to take a moment to let the community know. This morning, the Salvation Army Advisory Council met, of which I'm a part of, as well as both of our chiefs. And I want the community to know, first of all, at the food bank, the reserve shelves are empty, which means they're just going day-to-day. Just to give you some context for that, last year, last month, in September, 4,300 grocery requests were filled. The month before, 3,596, so 600 more grocery requests in a month. That's broken down to 1,382 families and 590 individuals. 305 new requests came for the first time. They're averaging 11 new requests every day, which is unheard of there. The reserves shelves are empty. That just really alarms me. Kettle season will be starting right after, actually, the kickoff will be at the landing, November 17th, I believe, when they do their tree lighting. And one thing that would be a huge help to the Salvation Army is if we could get groups to adopt a kettle, meaning that you would say, on this Saturday, our group, whether that's a PTA, a church group, a school group, whatever, neighborhood group, say, we will man that for eight hours, and that saves the Salvation Army paying people to be there to ring the bell. So I just want to put that out there and ask for people to think outside the box and know that the need is huge, bigger than it's ever been, and we all need to work together. So that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Merry Christmas coming up.
Mr. Corman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to announce that we have a Transportation Committee meeting coming up on October 25th, that's this coming Thursday, in the council conference room at 3:30 PM. Three items on the agenda, emerging issues, city teehanger rent increase, and aircraft tie-down storage rental. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Taylor?
No new business, Mr. Mayor, but I do like to report out a couple of events that I had an opportunity to attend last week. One was the Third Annual Fundraising Event for Cryout, which is the group that meets over in the Harambe Center. They offer programs for at-risk youth, primarily from Renton High School. They usually work with about 100 students who use their computer lab, they get tutored for various different subjects they're working on in school, and they're also trained on media, things such as videotaping and the like, a very worthwhile program. Also, I had an opportunity to go to the Domestic Violence Awareness Award Ceremony that was hosted by King County in Seattle, and they awarded several law enforcement individuals from both King County Sheriff's Office and the Seattle Police Department, who had successfully put together some pretty extraordinary efforts that resulted in convictions of domestic violence offenders, and that was a pretty heartwarming event. And that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Swicker, did we announce no council meeting next week?
I did.
Okay. Nope. Next is audience comment, anybody, any staff member want to address the council? What's a wish to the council?
Move we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Prince, so we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.
It put supplies in my classroom within two weeks.
An art class in the Bronx had no paintbrushes, and now every single student has a set.